Good morning all, I'd like to welcome you to this special call meeting and budget work session. Can we please have roll call Mrs. Byatt?
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Hahnke?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Page?
Here.
Ms. Winter? And Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, President S. Paul.
Thank you, can we all stand in the pledge of allegiance place? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. Thank you. And at this time, I'm assuming there are no adjustments to the agenda, Dr. Morton?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Okay, hearing there, there are no adjustments to the agenda, I've entertained a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
And I have a second.
Second.
All in favor by standing aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes, and now I will turn it over to Dr. Morton.
Thank you ma'am and chair members of the board, appreciate you all making yourselves available this morning so that we could get this information out to you in a timely fashion and then we can have a more comprehensive look and hopefully approval on May the first, which is our next meeting. And so, we wanted to take a little bit of time here based on some of our new realities to go over some recommendations we have to amend the budget and the school board approved budget. So where we will start, just a little bit of a timeline, and this is just trying to refresh the board as well as the community's memory as far as where we have been. And so, we began the process of budgeting here internally, of course, in November, December, as we met with department leads and heads and other principals and other groups. And we initially started back on the 23rd of January in a work session where we brought forward a series of priorities that we had, and they were related to the operating budget. Unfortunately, right around that same time or shortly after is when the information came out that there was a error in the COUT tool from the VDOE. And this was due to some formulas not being corrected to adjust for the whole harmless grocery tax, which was a policy change in 2022. And the impact was over a hundred some thousand for the current fiscal year, and it was $414,017 of an impact on our budget. And so, we knew pretty quickly then that some of the priorities that we had identified on the 23rd, we were not going to be able to accomplish, so we'll review those here in a moment. On February 6th, we brought forward an operating budget proposal. And then on February the 27th, Mr. Honnicker added in all of the other funds and brought those forward as well to the operating budget, and we had board approval at that time. As we moved through middle to end of March, we had two unknowns that we were still dealing with. One, of course, was going to be how much state funding we were going to have, and of course, how much local funding. And we started to get an estimate of the local funding that was going to be to the tune of about $1.2 million less than what our original budget from January 23rd through February the 27th had built in. And so, it was still somewhat of a waiting game until the Friday of April the 7th. In a VDOE, the state superintendent's memo let us know that there had now been a COUT tool created based on the kind of rectified skinny budget that the general assembly left. And now, we had a pretty good estimate of where we could go based on the new realities and the current numbers. And so, I'll start with just a review of the operated budget priorities. And you have seen these before, so initially, we wanted to make sure we weren't passing on health insurance increases to our employees. The state was, well, the governor's proposed education budget and the senate proposed education budget included funding for a 1% retention bonus for full-time SOQ employees. The house proposed budget did not. And so, with two out of the three calling for it, we had it built in. We knew we wanted to have a 5% pay increase minimum for full-time employees, and we were hoping to target quite a number of groups for a raise above that. If you recall, it was teachers' salary, we were hoping to do 7% plus the step. We wanted to address our mechanics, bus drivers, custodians, IA's, speech pathologists, as well as our elementary and middle school bookkeepers. And we have, the reason the high school was not in there at this point is we have addressed that with our recent hire, so this would make sure that all of our bookkeepers are addressed. Within the realm of positions, we were looking at an assistant principal for the primary elementary school site, a TTRT for Unionville, a nurse manager that would be based at the high school, two teachers for Locust Grove Middle. Although federally funded, a teacher mentor, so this wasn't going to be tied to our operating budget, but we did bring it forward. This person's job would be to literally be in the schools, working with our new folks to help provide additional support above and beyond what our current mentor and buddy system, as well as our administrators provide. We have student support coaches already, they are currently ESER funded, as well as a technology support specialist. And what we were hoping to do was to bring those positions out of ESER funding into the local budget so that we could reduce the ESER cliff that we would have to, that we're going to have to climb next year with our positions. And we had, we were going to increase the stipend for lead teachers. We worked diligently to revamp that position, working with our administrators and building leads. And these would essentially be replacing department chairs, and we had lead teacher stipends for the elementary and the secondary level. After we learned about the error in the COUT tool, based on the grocery tax error, it became pretty clear to us that we were going to have to pursue some changes to our priorities. And so, on the next slide, one of the things that we knew was, at the time when Mr. Berry was leaving, we weren't sure if a central office reorganization was going to be able to be permanent or not. However, it was the reduction of funds became clear. We knew that we were going to have to, at this point, eliminate the assistant superintendent position, funnel the responsibilities to executive directors and the chief operating officer. And this reorganization saved almost $140,000 in salary and benefits. And we also knew at that point, with over $400,000 less based on the COUT tool error, that we were not, we were going to have student support coaches, but we were going to not be able to bring them into local funding. We were going to have to return those positions to ESER funding, move them to ESER III. And that funding expires September 30th of 2024. And so, that's where we stood pretty much when we were in the February timeframe, and the school board approved our recommended budget. Forward a little bit, so now, we have some additional changes after the proposed number that we have heard from the local funding source, as well as the skinny budget from the state. One of the things we will show is the 1% retention bonus. This was not a decision by Orange County. The retention bonus funding has been removed from the COUT tool. So this is not something that Orange County alone is doing. So that funding is no longer included right now in the skinny budget COUT tool. Also, with the decreased funding, we were not going to be able to get everything we wanted with the teacher pay scale. However, we are happy to bring forward to you that we have a pay scale that is an average pay increase of 5.3%. It also gets our starting salary to over $51,000 for our step zero and a bachelor's degree. And it is graduated over the course of the steps. And so, there are steps towards the higher end in the 20-plus range, 15-plus range, there are 5.5, 5.6, even 5.7%. And so, we're happy that we're going to be able to accomplish that. We also are not going to be able to fund a TTRT for Unionville Elementary School. They currently split a TTRT between Unionville and Lightfoot, so Unionville is not left without one. We were just hopeful that we will be able to dedicate one to the building. However, this is not a reduction in force from what Unionville and Lightfoot currently have serving them. We still need two teachers at Locust Grove Middle School. We are seeking funding for one as a new position, and we have found a way to take a second, or the second that is needed, from a current vacancy that has been unfilled this year. Student support coaches had already been returned to ESER funding in the first go-around, and we also will need to return the technology support specialist position back to ESER funding. And so, within the constraints that have been brought forward, everything else that you see, we will be able to accomplish, given the numbers. And now, I'm going to invite Mr. Honnicker to come forward. He will run you through some of the charts and some of the changes. There's a few things of note that will be valuable for the board and the community to be aware of with respect to funding, particularly from our locality.
Here's a chart of our state revenues. Again, you're familiar with all of these different categories. The thing to note with the state funding is based on the skinny budget, generally skinny budget versus the governor's budget, it's a reduction of $431,861.
And just a reminder, so when we, the priorities we brought forward in January and the budget that was voted upon in February, the numbers were based on the governor's budget, proposed budget and those funding numbers. And so, the skinny budget from the state that has been left at this point has less revenue for school divisions, and for Orange County is to the tune of 400 some thousand.
Next is our federal revenue, and again, these are all grants that you're familiar with. Couple of things to note on here, and I think we talked about it before, but with your ESER II funding and your title 6BR money, even though you're seeing a reduction in the amounts there, those positions have been transferred to the ESER III grant, so we will be able to keep those positions for an additional year. The federal, this federal revenue is a reduction of $35,000. And again, that is due to the reduction in salaries. So this again is directly tied to our expenses. But again, as I think I mentioned before, our federal revenue is always equal our expenses, so this is sort of a wash in our budget. And with the local revenue, again, the top portion of this has not changed, but we'll go down to the bottom part. The bus loan proceeds, this has traditionally been an auditor's entry at the end of the year for the value of our buses that we purchased. But it's been suggested that we put this into the initial budgets that are going in at the end of the year. So as you see, the $1 million there for bus loans proceeds, that is just the cost of our budget. So the revenue for those budgets and the costs offset each other. So again, it doesn't necessarily affect the bottom line of our budget, but it's something that we needed to put into the budget. County transfer from general funds, again, this is actually, if you look at just this slide, it's a reduction of 1.4 million. But to explain that, traditionally, we have added 211-766 to our operating fund and then transferred it to the capital fund. So with some conversations with the county, I'm like, why don't we just put it straight into the capital fund instead of us putting it in our operating and transferring it to the capital? So that was agreed upon, so again, that's a reduction of 1.4, but overall, it's only a reduction of 1.2 million. And again, this is just our total operating revenue from the overall budget and an additional reduction of $1.7 million. And again, that makes, that's a state of 400 some thousand, and the counties, 1.2 million, and then the federal reduction of 35,000. So it's right at 1.7 million dollars reduction from the original budget that was passed. And this is just a list of our expenditures. One thing I will note here, with the instructional total, we were at 72% with the original governor's budget. And the reason you're seeing a slight decline in that is the million dollars we had put in there for the bus. That made the pupil transportation go up from 8% to 10%, which reduced our instructional total down to 71. So if that wasn't in there, we'd be there at 72%.
I have a question on the last slide.
Sure.
Which category is the teachers' call?
They're in the instructional total.
All the instructional total?
Yes. Food service and Head Start funds, neither one of these have changed since the last budget when it was passed. And again, same thing for textbook, adult ed, these are the same totals that we presented before. Again, debt service also is the same as before, which includes the Florida's contract number three, $403,680, which is to the capital. Originally, this was 567 in county funds, with the 211-766, this has become 778. The other thing to note here is the financial proceeds. Again, this is the same thing as with the buses. This is the value of the performance contract that we are entering in this year, or for next year. And that's at 5.6 million dollars. So the capital is significantly increased from the budget that was passed, but again, it's due to the financial proceeds.
And just as a reminder, Mr. Arnold has outdated that the third performance contract is based on the information that the board heard, I believe it was December 19th when ABM was here. And it's a performance contract for a series of energy upgrades, lighting in particular, across multiple sites. And it also, and 3.3 some million of that is also the Gordon Barber HVAC overhaul, removing the two-pike system and putting in a variable refrigerant system. So the performance contract includes that money as well. And so, the Gordon Barber HVAC, that would probably be a next summer of '24 project, but it is part of that financing for the third performance contract.
So the last slide is just to show you the total of all funds for our total revenue and total expense. And our total budget would be $78,788,815. Any questions for me or Dr. Morton?
Yeah, one question. Norman's schools don't get any construction money from the state, but I've heard that we did get some, can you explain what that is and how it happened?
We received that last year. We did not receive any construction funds for this year.
And so, what we're doing is, we are going to, we are utilizing a portion of that to pay for the Unionville roof repair. At the last budget meeting, I'm sorry, at the last school board meeting, Mr. Arnold presented, and you all approved, the awarding of the walkway connectors at Unionville and Lightfoot. And at that time, we were anticipating having to use state construction proceeds there. The county has signaled their willingness to actually cover that cost using remaining funds from Blue Bell. So we will not have to utilize our construction funding to do the Unionville and Lightfoot connector, which will mean that we don't have to cover the 1.1 million dollars or so that that project is. So we are preparing to use that money earmarking essentially to do the Gordon Barber roof repair. And that is currently under design, and that would be a project that we would want to address next summer. And so, basically, between the addition of Gordon Barber, the completion of the walkway connector, the HVAC and the roof, Gordon Barber will now be complete with their major capital projects that we know that we need to complete there. And so, those are the things, so it would be the Unionville roof, the Gordon Barber roof, and we will still have construction funds available to address other projects that we will need to do. And so, those are healthy and positive aspects of our funding that we would want to draw forward.
I believe that it was 2.1, is that correct? For the construction funds that we shaved last year?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, it was almost 2.2 million, it was a little over 2.1 million in construction funds. So 560 some thousand, that is for the Unionville roof. And then, we are anticipating anywhere from 850 to a shade under a million to do the Gordon Barber roof. And so, we'll still have some funds after that.
Were those state funds divided equally between all the jurisdictions? Or is this something special? Well, I know we belong to a coalition of southwestern counties and they were pushing for it. Just how did this state?
It was based on a formula with your LCI at ABM.
Okay.
Question I have, is there any way we can get an example of what the COUT tool actually is and how it works in our budgets?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Have that for the, maybe? Well, we can send it out to you as well.
Yes, we'll send it out to you. It's basically a very detailed and intricate spreadsheet with values. It's an Excel sheet, the values and equations are built into. And so, when the policy change came forward with the whole harmless grocery tax, the equation, your input wasn't changed to reflect that. And so, the numbers that we were working with in January, as well as the other 130 school divisions, were inflated because the COUT tool had not been adjusted to reflect the new tax policy change that was in place. And so, it was overestimating and overfunding schools beyond what the state actually thought was going to be funded. And so, the state of Virginia, the general assembly and the governor came together and they corrected, well, the COUT tool was corrected, and then they corrected the error for this current fiscal year so that no school division, because we were facing a loss of 160 some thousand dollars. And so, they infused and made sure that we had the funding so we didn't have reduced funding this year. However, for FY '24, a little bit different scenario, which I understand, we were working with a COUT tool, but it's a little bit different because we didn't have the money. Yet, right, it was all projected, so it was, you know, for FY '24, it was you have to find some way to take your pot of money that's going to be reduced and now work within that. And so, it's not going to be corrected, meaning we're not going to have, we may, and we're hoping that we would see more state funding, but it won't be to the tune of fixing $414,017 from the COUT tool error. Right, the original error. And so, if we see an increase in funding, which we hope we do, you know, we will go back to the priorities that we established. If we see, you know, if we get 85 or 90 some thousand dollars more, it would probably be in our best interest to try to bring one of those positions over. If we have, you know, a quarter of a million dollars, you know, that might be something that is more palatable to take a look at a teacher pay scale to actually make a dent there. So a lot of those things are up in air, so we're trying to go with our best, the best that we can do with the numbers that we know pretty well, hopefully, that we would be receiving. It's certainly clearer now than it was even a week and a half ago.
And just to clarify, can you explain the difference between, obviously, we have teachers broken into education, and then we got full-time employees? What is the difference between the two, and how do we break those down?
As far as whether the difference between the teachers and our other full-time employees?
Well, just as far, I guess what I'm asking is how many? So how many full-time employees do we have versus how many teachers in that kind of scenario?
Are you talking about the SOQ funded?
Well, we talked about a 5% for full-time employees. So I guess that's more or less what I'm considering. Is that still SOQ for those as well, or is that full-time employees in general?
That would be full-time.
That's full-time in general, excluding the teachers. So we put the teachers in a different category, just to say, the full-time employees will receive 5%. The teachers would receive the addition.
The three or the seven, the difference is there? Okay. That's fine, thank you.
And then, for instance, for our custodians, going back, and these are numbers you have heard before, they currently start in the 12 some dollar, we want to get them to a $14 starting salary. So their scale is more than 5% of a pay raise. Our bus drivers are currently starting at 1850. We would, our budget gets them to a $20 per hour starting salary. Instructional assistants are in the $13 realm, we're looking to get them to $15. So those are, those are those groups that we were targeting, including the teacher group, to have a raise that was beyond the 5% for all full-time employees.
So that list that you gave on the one spreadsheet with the bus drivers and teachers, that's grouped as individuals, if you will, and then everybody else that's full-time is grouped into the other?
Correct, yes ma'am, that's correct. You have questions? And so, I know there are discussions, of course, all counties are working through this in all localities. So with what we have brought forward to you, we are able to maintain our positions. And this is not, when we look at support coaches and the technology specialists, we are still going to have those, our folks fortunately, working in Orange County schools. They will be funded out of ESER III funding. And so, we do not have to cut any positions. And so, that is, that is good news, pending what, you know, when you read some of the literature and some of the newspapers and hear what's going on in some other localities, that might not be the case there. So we're, that is not something that we have to do here, even with the constraints that we have. So that's, that's very fortunate, that we're able to cover raises, address some of our places that were the farthest apart from our neighboring divisions, and not have to sacrifice or cut positions basically via attrition or any other manner. So that's, that's good news.
My hat's off to Mr. Honnicker on that. He does a due diligence and awesome work on that to keep it straight. And I know he's got side kids, like his Dawson. But I don't know if I help him or. Call him Harvard.
A little both.
But thank you both, because like I said, over the weekend, I've heard some horror stories. So I'm appreciative of what we are able to do and continue to do, so.
Question, since the board approved this budget a month or so ago, I would suggest we need to approve this today, so that administration can go on and work with teachers. Because if we approved something a month ago and then they start making different changes and putting out contracts, that wouldn't be right. So I think, once we started down the road with the board approving the budget, we need to continue down that road.
Absolutely right, and so, and right, and that was our commitment to you all back in February. We approved it, and we spoke at that time about it sends a message that we're behind the priorities and the things that we want to accomplish. However, we told you, made a promise to you that if changes were necessary, we would bring those back as a proposal to you all to digest and then ultimately approve. And you are, you're 100% correct. You know, we're sitting at April 17th, you know, our 10-month employees are done. You know, our 10-month employees are done in a month. And so we, we do want to get contracts started, be able to send those out to folks and then have them back before they leave so we're settled. So that was part of the reason, as far as the timeliness and, and seeking to have this meeting today is we, when we got the information on April 7th that we had a CAAT toll and then we, we basically used the better part of last week to, to build what we could using it to get a good sense of where we are so that we could, in a timely fashion, bring those updates to you all as a proposal.
My intention is to make a motion to approve this today, but before I do that, we all understand that this, we're basing everything on a budget that is going to change into state level, because this skinny budget is not going to be the final budget. But we don't know with that final budget, whether we're going to know the state budget. It could be the middle of the summer before it gets approved. So we have to do something. So this is, this is what we have to do. But what I'm saying is, everybody in this room knows that there's going to be changes as soon as the state puts in their numbers. Hopefully, it's going to be increases. But you can't, you can't count on that until, until it's done.
And we will ensure that we're transparent with you all. And should we see an increase in funding, we will absolutely come back to you and say, here, here's what the number is and here, here's our recommendation for how to utilize those funds to, to bring that back to you all. So we will make sure that we're transparent and open as those numbers come through.
And, and, and working from today as this is what we know as Monday, April 17th.
That's right.
You know, so Kristoffens, would you like the impending motion?
Yes, I make a motion we approve a budget as presented today.
Second, all in favor?
I have a question.
Sure.
I would like to discuss. My only concern with approving it today is that the other two board members were under the impression that we were waiting till May 1st to approve the budget. And my concern is that we're, we're cutting them, kind of, excuse me, cutting them out today based off of, I understand that the budget hasn't changed, but we gave them the option to be here, but they obviously weren't able to be. But at the same time, we also gave them the impression that we approved on the 1st. So I really, I can't say that they're going to disapprove of the budget, but at the same time, I think it's fair to debate for the other two, since we did make that option altogether.
Wouldn't we make the commitment?
Well, it was on the approval or on the agenda, we would approve it on May 1st.
Oh, this?
Yeah, and then we talked about it before.
Okay.
About approving it on May 1st. So it's been discussed, May 1st has been today, and I just feel that.
Well, my only question, and that's to the administration. Do you need, do you need it today because of teacher contracts or is, if it, if it's okay to wait until May 1st, it's fine with me?
Yes, sir, it, it is. That was part of the reason that we, we sought to meet with you today. What we were concerned about is if we may, waited until May 1st to bring this forward as a proposal and then simultaneously let you know, we kind of need this now, tonight, it didn't fully allow for the entire process. And so if, if, if things go well and May 1st and we have approval May 1st, we do have enough time to get our contracts rolling and out in time to get back. So we, we absolutely can make that work. And so that was the original reason that we sought action May 1st, because we didn't want to bring, we didn't want to do this meeting on May 1st and then essentially wait till May 22nd. Because then our, our 10-month employees are gone at that time and then we're, we're hoping they're checking email and we're trying to send calls to them, et cetera. And so, but May 1st is sufficient.
Okay, since May 1st is sufficient, I will draw my motion and thank, thank you simply.
And while I, I, I do agree and I see your philosophy with moving forward, Jim, on this for as administration, I also see your concerns and validate your philosophy. So we will then table this and do a maker.
Yes, ma'am. And again, we thank you all for coming out for a special meeting today. And that was, this was the reason why, we wanted to get this information out to you based on what we know at this moment on April 17th.
I think that will also allow for the other board members to go through the presentation and understand it and come ready to meet.
Yeah, I, I, I see the validation in that. Okay. Well, that being said, if there is no other business, I will declare this meeting adjourned.